All right, I will ask Clerk to do roll call.
Counselor Tesher, absent, Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega, absent, Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Sannegut.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Here.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Recupero, absent, Counselor Kelly Garcia, absent, Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Eight members present, you have a quorum. The Chelsea City Council will hold a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference on Monday, February 12th at 6:00 PM to receive an update from City Manager Fidel Maltez on his first 100 days of his administration.
All right, City Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Council President, and thank you for hosting me tonight and giving me an opportunity to, one, report on the progress we have made over the last forty-two days of this administration, and also highlight the work that is coming and will be evolving as we reach the critical milestone of 100 days. So, what we have done essentially as a senior leadership team is essentially divided our work areas, if you will, into eight buckets. Of course, you know, we will never have enough buckets, but these are the buckets that we consider critical and instrumental in the short term and also in the long term. So, I'll just go through the eight buckets rather quickly, and you'll see that this presentation builds on itself as we progress. So, on the first bucket, it's obviously public safety. We have spent a lot of time these last forty-two days, and obviously before this, on public safety and ensuring that all of our residents are safe and, most importantly, feel safe. So, we have done a lot of work with the City Council, with our police department in terms of highlighting this aspect. Of course, there's a lot of aspects to public safety, which all, you know, again, this presentation builds on itself. Another one is to support our schools, right? While I am not in charge of schools, that is the role of our superintendent, I am very close with our superintendent, and one core focus area of this administration is to support our schools. The third bucket, as I have shared with the City Council, is to focus on improving our city services. That means three-on-one, it means being responsive to our constituents, to our residents, it means being proactive when it comes to our parking issues and beyond. So, one of our core focus areas is to improve our city services. Housing, obviously, is a big one. It is one of the biggest topics that I'm hearing in this early days of the administration. But, you know, it's a very complex issue that, you know, will take a lot of conversations to develop. Number five is youth and workforce development. As we heard at our last City Council meeting, a huge focus of this council and of our community is to engage our youth, and there's a lot of overlap with our work with improving city services with public safety. So, this bucket is one bucket that we will continue to work on in 2024. Number six is something that I'm really passionate about, as you all know, and it is public infrastructure, the environment, and sustainability. So, we have several quite large projects. One of the main ones that I'm focusing on is Downtown Broadway. We're spending a lot of time reaching out to our businesses, reaching out to our council on that quite large infrastructure project. Next bucket is creating an engagement strategy with our community. As you all know, and as I will touch later on in this presentation, we are investing a lot of time in the community and creating opportunities to engage with our residents. And finally, public health. Next one. Thank you. So, the, in the previous slide, what we showed there is basically what are we going to do? In this area, in this slide, what I'm showing you is our vision, right? It's essentially, it is going to be our core principles, our guiding template, and it is going to be what I envision and foresee as our mantras, if you will, right? When we come back and evaluate how we're doing, I will always go back to these core values. So, at the core of the values is the one at the top and the one at the bottom, which is accountability and responsiveness. So, accountability is the concept that we are responsible for our work, we will own our mistakes, we will hold ourselves, our staff, and each other accountable for all of our work, and the counterpoint of that is being responsive. We will answer every email from our residents, we will return every phone call, we will provide updates on projects and any requests from the council. And the core values that are around those two big ones really build on each other. So, one of them is teamwork, right? In the hiring process, I heard a lot of need for interdepartmental collaboration and the idea that we need to foster teamwork both inside of the building and outside of the building with relation to our community-based partners in the nonprofit sector as well as the profit sector. We will always be a resident-focused government, right? We are in public service, we are here to serve the public. And I added two things that I hope will resonate with a few of the councilors. One is proactive government, of course, and also fiscally responsible. So, it is the notion that, at the end of the day, the job of the City Manager is to ensure that we are able to balance the books and that we don't make any commitments that are going to get the City of Chelsea into hot water from a financial standpoint. Obviously, climate resiliency is a big one. We are a coastal community, we're really focused on the island and river as our big project at the moment, but it involves a lot more. The Downtown Broadway project is significantly improving our infrastructure, and the Upper Broadway project did exactly that. Thank you. So, the next few slides are a continuation, right, of the vision and of the priority areas, and the idea is that we are going to have senior staff leaders who will be responsible, obviously, for each one of these, and these eight priorities are going to build on each other, and it's going to be our focus in 2024 and in 2025. So, they're going to be kind of our, you know, our focus areas, right? And, you know, in my opinion, there's a lot of overlap on these priority areas and what we heard from the council at your Subcommittee last week. Next slide. And again, these are just the next four that I shared in graphics previously. Thank you. All right, so now, so what I wanted to do here is provide a summary, essentially, a high-level overview of the 100-day plan. As you know, we are on day 44, and I feel excited about what we have accomplished in the short amount of time, but I feel more excited about what is coming in the next 58, in the next 58 days. So, in the, this slide is meant to be a visually graphic slide that we can share with constituents, with organizations, right? And it is essentially what I am using in order to communicate my goals and commitments to the City Council and also to our residents. Next one. So, I shared this with the council at your retreat. One thing that I mentioned to the City Council early was the need to be proactive and realize that with the retirement of Natkeev, who is obviously a huge resource for our community, we needed to get ahead of this and hire our two deputy city managers. We have hired those two people. Our deputy city manager of operations is starting on March 4th, and our deputy city manager of finance is starting on April 1st. What you see here is an organizational chart, and I added a caveat on it that in these first 100 days, but actually, it will probably take a year, in order to fully shake out the organizational structure. But, the New York structure, as I see it at this moment, is how it is shown on the screen. Thank you. In the next slide, it's essentially a no review and also a commitment to the City Council that I feel like we are in very good shape in the City Manager's office now with these hires, and furthermore, we do not foresee a need to complete any more hires. So, I feel like at this moment, with the hiring of our two deputy city managers and our director of constituent services, our city manager's organization is fully done. So, obviously, the days 1 through 30 were half come and gone, but the focus of my first 30 days were to reestablish, right, our meetings, our department heads' meetings, our operations meeting, our finance meetings. Essentially, it was going, it was based on going back to basics, right? So, we spent a lot of time interacting with the City Councilors, obviously, with the Downtown Task Force. We started our weekly meetings at 4:30 PM on youth and violence, right? And essentially, the avenue is to create recurring meetings that serve as a platform for engaging internally as an organization with each other, and again, just really focusing on collaboration with departments. So, this next 30 days, it's really spent outside, right? So, we held our first listening session at the high school. It was on Tuesday of last week, and it was phenomenal. We had over 50 youth, and again, the goal was not to learn from them what they wanted in our schools. The goal was to learn from them how the city could support our youth, right? So, and what's really interesting is that a lot of the themes had significant overlap with what we're talking about on our work, right? It was, they want a youth center, they want workforce development for youth, they want the city to focus on economic mobility for our youth, right? So, what I'm hearing is a lot of overlap, right? And in many ways, it is reinforcing, reinforcing our work, but will ultimately shape what we are going to be focusing on 2024 and 2025. So, one commitment that I just wanted to highlight is that at the end of these sessions, we will present our findings in a State of the City Report and a State of the City Presentation. Next slide, please. In the next 40 days, which is going to be days 62 to 100, I wanted to make a commitment to the City Council that we would really focus on this notion and this idea of a master plan, right? I think that most councilors in your meeting on Tuesday were looking or highlighted the need to have a comprehensive conversation, a strategic conversation, right? And I feel like, you know, like we all, maybe we have mixed feelings about what a master plan is, but I think that we can all coalesce and all get behind the need to have a conversation about strategy into the future. So, I'm pairing this into two separate tasks. One is a short-term task, which we are calling Vision 2025, which is essentially what we are doing this year and we are doing next year. Of course, it is focused on more short-term items, and in fact, one of them is the creation of a youth center task force, right? So, we have been talking about a youth center as long as I've been in Chelsea, and it requires a lot of planning, financial planning, a lot of strategizing. So, we, with the help of this council, we will officially launch our youth-centered task force, and we will, of course, finalize the FY25 budget, and we will hopefully present our State of the City Report and address to the City Council. And I just wanted to, you know, share what we see, sorry, yeah, yeah, no, you're good. So, the, I feel like if we call it something that removes the notion of master plan, right? Whether it's, what does Chelsea look like in 2050, right? What is our strategy to get to 2050? What do we want Chelsea in 2050 to look like, right? And it's not necessarily in terms of, you know, one issue, right? It involves everything. We have to make sure that we are withstanding storms, right, because that are coming in 2050. We have to make sure that we have housing that is sustainable, we have to make sure that we are improving traffic and not making it worse, right? So, I feel like if we call it something else, if we can get a little savvy on the marketing and branding, I think that we can all hopefully coalesce around this idea of the need for a strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have questions on the council?
Yeah.
Okay, I have Counselor Robinson and then Counselor Recupero.
First, I'd like to thank the City Manager. We've had some conversations back and forth. A lot of people in the community were asking, what are we doing? How's it going on? I thought it would be best for him to come and present what his 100 days looks like, and just want to thank him for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Recupero.
I seen something over there that interested me.
Use the mic.
On your board there, you said you have...
Counselor, can you lower the mic so we can all hear you?
Okay. I seen something over there that interested me, that I'm curious, I would like to know. You have the neighborhood developers, right, on there as someone that you always talk with, right? I believe in the neighborhood developers in one thing, but I also believe the one before it, you had it there, the one after that. See right down there where it says neighborhood developers?
That one, yeah.
See right there, right? You know where it says city managers sessions? They come to you, right, and they talk with you, right? Do they talk about how to lower the rent and how to get more Chelsea people into the city to live with us? Or, because I get a lot of things, you know, a lot of people call me about the neighborhood developers, right? And certain things, I don't kind of agree with what they do. I would like to know exactly, when they come to you, what do they ask for? Do they ask where's the next property that could be built so they can go in and develop? Or do they ask, what can we do to make it better for the people that are here? Or do they come to you and says, what's the step for us to keep more Chelsea people here? So, what is their involvement? That's what I would like to know. What is their involvement, really?
Thank you very much, Counselor. So, the idea of the listening sessions is to be inclusive, right? It is to really be focused on not going to one part of our community, it is to go in and speak to everyone. The goal of these sessions is to listen. It is not for me to get an answer to a question, it is not for me to negotiate any kind of deal in the future. And if you notice, I'm more interested in hearing from the residents that are living in those neighborhoods, right, and really hearing from them. So, it's not necessarily to speak to management at the neighborhood developers or any one of these organizations. It is more to listen to the community that are convened by these organizations.
So, in other words, you, the neighborhood developers is there because they are the largest, because they are the largest renter in our city. So, in other words, they rent the most apartments to everybody in the city. They have...
No, no. It's...
They have, they have a large stake in that, right? And do they go around telling you what their tenants are asking them to do, or what are the intent to do for the tenants that are there? So, when they talk to you or whatever you ask them, what is one of the major questions you ask them?
So, I haven't done it yet, so I'll let you know when I do have it. I will tell you that in the history, my history in Chelsea, I have engaged with the residents at the Box District Park, right, and that entire area of Chelsea. I have engaged with residents on the properties, on the newer properties. So, again, I am more interested in talking to, more interested in talking to the community, more interested in talking to our residents as opposed to the management.
So, let me ask you a question, Mr. Manager. So, when you have this type of meeting, can we go and the public attend you? You're going to tell, say, here, we have a meeting with such and such, and if you want to voice your concern about anything that you have, you can address it at this particular time?
Yes, sir, absolutely, and I welcome you all of it. I think a couple of the councilors have attended, a few of them already. It is the reason why I attached essentially a sample of the flyer that we're using, but yes, absolutely, we're...
Would the public be able to go to?
This is to hear you, to hear, and by you, I mean the public, I mean our residents, I mean our constituents. These meetings are open to anyone. They are, and I welcome, encourage it, and need people to attend.
Counselor Recupero, thank you. I'll recognize now Counselor Jimenez and then Counselor Brown.
Thank you. And just to say, I attended one of the listening sessions this past week, and, you know, like the City Manager has said, right, it's really about listening to people, there are no leading questions, they're really just very open-ended questions, and then just whatever is top of mind for people, that's what he's trying to listen to. And I just want to highlight for the Counselor that it says the neighborhood developers tenants, so this is really about the tenants, not about the organization itself, so I think that that's important to note. The question that I had, I just wanted to check on the organizational chart. I know that on the right side, there's like fire, police, IT, and all of those, those are not, are those also under the operations or are those under the City Manager?
Great question. So, all departments that are on the right will continue reporting right to the City Manager.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. If we could just go back to the listening slide that we had a moment ago, so I think that's very important, I think that, yeah. Go back. Come on. There you go. You had it. So, I'm glad that the City Manager actually does this here. This is really important, in a sense, for our residents to give input and also direction. We have a lot of great organizations up there on that chart that's a part of actively involved in helping us to shape and model our city, and, you know, with this here, you get a really understanding of the vision. 25, we're looking 50 years from now, well, 25 years from now, what Chelsea would look like, and I think a lot of these folks that's listed here, these organizations here, will really help us, not only the council, but whoever the City Manager is. So, I want to commend you on being able to just adapt your time and your leadership and be able to hear what folks are saying throughout the city. I want to thank you also for being here tonight, and, you know, I know it's early into the 100 days, as you stated, it's 44 days, we got 56 days back, but I really support your efforts and endorse your goals, that what you're doing, the vitality and economic work that you're doing to enhance the community is a lot of what we said and a lot of what we've been working for and working on, and even as we met at our last Subcommittee, where we had our priority meeting, so they reflect in your vision there. So, I want to really thank you for that. I think at the end of the day, we're all here fighting for the betterment of Chelsea, and we're trying to really provide the best service for our community, and this here demonstrates, and this is really good for 44 days. I mean, you know, you got a lot here, that means you've been listening, you've been paying attention, and you're really proactive in working with us, and I really want to commend you on that, and I'll be endorsing your goals and, again, your economic vitality of how we can continue to make our city better. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
Mr. City Manager, when we talk about a strategic plan for the future and what Chelsea looks like in 2050, are you, you said in the beginning that on your little chart that you had a list of kind of core values or the slide with the buckets? Is this what's, is this what's guiding your vision for what Chelsea looks like in 2050? Or are we, or are we kind of going to be going at this conceptually about the things like, for instance, you know, we want to raise the median income of Chelsea by X amount of dollars in the next 25 years? Or we want more, you know, economic activity, we want so many housing units, all these kinds of kind of goals that we can kind of set? Now, we talked about priorities in our legislative priority Subcommittee, but those, some of those are certainly long-term, and some of them will be here, you know, public safety is going to be a need no matter when we talk about. But I guess when we're trying to look to the future and try to craft where we want to go as a roadmap, what exactly is guiding your vision there? Is it those buckets or is it something, something else?
Yeah, I think it's really hard for the City Manager to think about 2050. I think, you know, as a manager, I tend to think more 2024, absolutely, more 2025, absolutely. So, that is the eight buckets. I think the 2050 is a larger conversation, is a broader conversation, and, you know, it gets to the notion of what I heard Guy Sannegut say, and it's become a thing around city managers in this area, right? We... We plan the work and then we work the plan, right? This idea of 2050 is not something that I think we've done before. I think it's something that we cannot enter with any notions of what it looks like. I think we should all, we all deserve to enter it with a blank slate, almost.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have any more questions? No, seeing none? Thank you, city manager.
One other comment. I also wanted to echo some of my councillor's sentiments. I'm glad you went on a listening tour. I think that is, that is very important. Most politicians love to talk, right? But what they don't understand is that when you listen, you know, you learn a lot more and you can help remedy things a lot better if you listen. So I really do commend you. I wish it could be broader than just those organizations. But, you know, that's ongoing. I'm sure you're going to get a lot of people telling you what they think in your ear. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Before you close, I asked if you can allow the city manager to give us a closing statement. It's very well-prepared in its opening statement, since we have no more questions.
All right. City manager, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. No, I recorded a message, right? And I am going to be intentional in recording these messages. And I think the overall message is hope, it's optimism, right? I do feel that it's a story that I heard once I left Chelsea. Chelsea is the biggest comeback story in the state of Massachusetts, potentially even more than that, right? And it's really hard to see how far we've come 25 years ago, right? If in the year 2000, you would have said, this is what Chelsea looks like. If in the year 1985, right, you would have said, this is what Chelsea looks like, right? Who knows what Chelsea is going to look like in 2050? But I am filled with hope, I am filled with optimism in our city and our residents.
Thank you, city manager. All right, this meeting is closed.